And good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for December 5th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have four items on the agenda. The first, I believe we're skipping, correct? Or are we still taking on this item? That's the appointment?
Yeah.
Oh, we can't?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's just more.
Great. Well, the first one is appointment of a licensing board member, and I'd like to recommend Alderman Zingheim.
Motion to approve.
Which I guess...
Second.
Well, hold on. This is just within the licensing board, right?
Yes.
So, so you can motion?
Yes, motion approved.
And I guess I'll second because we're the only two members. All in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then Ian, you're going to say that he does not go into effect right away?
Yeah, the recommendation will go to council next meeting then.
Okay, got it. So hang tight, Aaron. All right. Next up is approval of the minutes, licensing board regular meeting minutes from September 26th.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any question on that? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then under agenda items for consideration, we have number two, a secondhand article dealer license for N Schneberg NS Liquidations LLC at 505 Shepherd's Drive in West Bend.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then appointment of Agent R McFate, Texas Roadhouse, 800 West Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that passes. And then having no further business for the licensing board, adjourned by the call of the chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee for December 5th, 2022. Looking for approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting October 10th, 2022, 5:00 PM.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now looking for approval for the Finance Committee regular meeting minutes for October 17th, excuse me, 2022, 6:25.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then looking for approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting November 7th, 2022, 5:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Agenda item number four, resolution to accept Wisconsin Department Administration Neighborhood Investment Fund grant initial payment. And thank you so much, Jess, for getting, for getting this grant. That is $2.65 million to the city.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Thank you. I just wanted to come up and say a few things. So on October 2021, we requested your support to apply for the Wisconsin Department of Administration's Neighborhood Investment Fund Grant. And in March 2022, the City of West Bend was awarded $2,655,000 to complete the downtown Riverwalk West project. The application writing, implementation, and administration required for this grant is extensive, and it's made possible by our dedicated city staff team. Recently retired Parks Project Manager Cindy Lyons and I authored this grant in collaboration with Jay Shambow and Mike Yench. Mike and his team carry out all Riverwalk project activities. Our finance team, specifically Amy Miller, manages grant compliance and appropriations. It's truly a multi-department effort. Tonight, we respectfully request the appropriation of $885,230.97. This will be the first of three payments.
And thank you to all those folks looking for...
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion or questions for Jess?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Jess. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Agenda item number five, resolution accepting donations for smoke alarm program. Can we just take the next three? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for those all being separate. They came in kind of, I waited and waited and submitted it, and then two more came in.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you, Chief.
All right, so what did we decide? Doing them all? Okay, all right, so we have numerous, we have numerous donations for the smoke alarm system or our smoke, our free smoke alarm program. Mr. and Mrs. Bacchus received free smoke alarms and was grateful for them and donated $50. The one in there that's not smoke alarm is Mrs. Jean White, received medical services for us and was appreciative and donated $100, which we do put in this free smoke alarm program to keep that going. The next one is our great corporate partner, West Bend Mutual, donated $1,000 worth of magnets and PR equipment for our smoke detector program. And the last one is Mr. and Mrs. Terrence Ty who received free smoke alarms and were grateful for it. So we thank all those people. Can't push that smoke alarm program enough. I think Kenny told me he's done over 50 free smoke alarm installations this year, and if you figure that's at least four smoke detectors and a CO detector, that's a lot. So in order to keep that program going, West Bend Mutual has been a huge partner with us, and we're happy that Kenny takes the ball and runs with it. But if you know of anybody that needs smoke detectors, please have them get in contact with us because it saves a life. It's very, very important, so we thank these people for their donations.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, is that, is that including all three of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move all three of them.
Okay. Okay, I wasn't sure that was also good.
Discussion.
Three resolutions and four donations.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you. Got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yeah, quick question. There's a mention in here on the West Bend Insurance Natural Gas Alarms, are those new?
They're new for the program, so depending on what kind of application or where we're putting them in, Captain Azlen determines if they need one there, and then he'll put one of those in.
Okay, all right.
Great, thanks, Chief. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
You have a good one. Okay. Agenda item number eight, resolution accepting a donation from Rayburn A. Frank, and I believe this is Chief Daring.
Good evening, thank you. On November 7th, Mr. Frank came in and donated $750 of local business gift cards with requests that we find a way to help our community and those who are in need. Very generous, not just a cash donation, but went to these businesses, supported our local businesses, and then looking for a way to help our community and those in need. We were able to coordinate with our Fraternal Order of Police who worked the Shop With a Cop program, and in return donated those cards to the Shop With a Cop program for their event, which was held very successfully on November 30th of this year. So we, no action needed to transfer any funds, just wanted to recognize Mr. Frank's generosity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And again, with Chief, resolution accepting a donation from the Robert Schumacher family.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Schumacher came in on the 29th of November with a $200 cash donation towards the police department and wanted to express his gratitude. He and his family expressed gratitude to the police department for our work at keeping an eye on their property on 18th Avenue. So I'm very appreciative of Mr. Schumacher's donation. We'd like to use that for our crime prevention account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, we glossed over a bunch of the donations from the fire department. They weren't read publicly because someone made a motion to approve all of them at once.
I thought we went through all of them.
He didn't mention Terrence Ty. He didn't...
Yes, he did.
He did?
Yes.
Then I guess I was having another one of those Pettit moles that I was mentioning before. I apologize.
Totally forgiven. You're fine, you're fine, Jed. No problem. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10, 2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement between City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Union Local 503. And this is Michelle.
Yes. Good evening. So we met with the Dispatcher Clerical Union, and we settled on a 3% increase across the board and an additional 1% for four dispatchers to move them up, so they're closing the gap, effective 1/123, similar to what we did with the non-reps. Looking for your blessing on this.
Awesome. Thank you, Michelle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, Michelle. Appreciate that. I'm glad to see that narrowing. That's awesome. And with no further business before the Finance Committee, adjourned by the call of the chair.
And good evening once again. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for December 5th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman, Aaron's absent and excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic of which is the Constitution of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll note that we have a little bit of a lengthy agenda. We've got 24 items on our agenda, first being approval of the minutes, and I'll just take the special meeting August 25th, the regular meeting of October 17th, and the regular meeting of November 7th altogether. I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Monal and Dolnick. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Onto the consent agenda, considering items four through 12.
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Kayler. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to agenda items for consideration, number 13, a resolution for the City of West Bend to exceed the state-imposed municipal levy limit. I believe our city administrator is going to give us some background quick before we vote.
Yeah, this is a, should be a familiar resolution. We did the exact same thing last year with the 2023, 2022 budget. We could have, should have had this on the same agenda item for the November 7th budget adoption, but Kerry and I missed it and neglected to put the resolution on. It's now before you. It allows you to look back, which the 2023 budget does, look back into the levy limit formula and use some of the funds that you had left on the table in previous years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Monal and Allen. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 14, approval of the 15th Amendment amended agreement for the operation of the Midmarine Municipal Court. I don't know if we have a presentation on that, otherwise, yeah. Go ahead.
I don't know if it's a presentation, but it's a requirement by the municipal court for all municipalities to take positive recommendation, positive action on this recommendation. I do serve on the Midmarine Municipal Court Board, and whenever a new entity is requesting to join the group of municipalities, this is a formal amendment that's required. So the same action is being acted on in all the municipalities that are members.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Kayler and Allen. Any questions on this?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It was what, the town of West Bend and who else was joining?
Town of Polk, town of West Bend, Cedar Lake Protection and Rehabilitation.
That's, that's a municipality?
Well, it's a, it's a entity that can issue citations, so.
Oh, okay. Answers my questions, thank you.
And actually, I've heard there is some question regarding the district, the Cedar Lake. They're, they're working through that process legally, and I don't know the answer if they're not allowed to join, if we'll have to come back with a new resolution that just shares the, the other two for, for an amendment. But well, I'll keep you posted on that if we have to do that. The Lake District is currently working with Jonathan Woodward and individuals to figure out whether or not they can formally join or not. But they did receive recommendation by the Midmarine Municipal Court to join if legally they can.
All right. We do have a motion second. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, some of us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we're going to do things a little out of order. Number 16 is the public comments, number 15 is the actual action item, so I'm going to start with number 16, which opens for public comments regarding the ordinance amending Section 7.075 and repealing and recreating Section 7.085 of the municipal code relating to downtown parking and parking permit lots regulations. So we'll treat this just like we do any other public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this item, feel free to come on up.
And if you don't mind me adding Mayor Jenkins, we really do want to know if there's some concerns out there, so if you have concerns...
Now's the time.
Come on up.
Going once, going twice. We don't need any official action to end it, so that's fine. All right. Then we'll move on, number 15, which is ordinance amending Section 7.075 and repealing and recreating Section 7.085 of the municipal code relating to downtown parking and parking permit lots regulations. And I believe we're set off with Chief.
Good evening. It's kind of an odd order to go in. I understand the reasoning, but maybe, just maybe a suggestion, if we have some comments after the presentation, I think it would be prudent. We truly want to be transparent but open and also be responsive to the community. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this, to the council finally. We've been in discussion well for the last year. We've presented to the Bid Transportation Board on a number of occasions and presented to the Full Bid Board on November 15th and received a unanimous approval to move forward with changing the ordinance. I'd recommend if you have questions after tonight's presentation, you review that meeting online and answered a lot of questions, and we actually got some pretty good public input from the people that attended, presumably bid board members and employees downtown, employers downtown. The nexus for this is the parking ordinance that's on the books now. It's been on since 2002. I just have a very strong feeling that it's no longer good law. And good law, just on very basic established principles, is that the law is well-known to the public, it's acceptable in the community, and it's able to be enforced. And our ordinance, as we've written, has always been a challenge to enforce. However, like strategically now, it's unenforceable. There, part of the ordinance is a database supplied by the employers in the downtown of employee vehicles. That database no longer exists, hasn't existed for quite some time. There's a shopping and a commuter permit that's supposed to be issued by the Downtown Association. Those haven't been issued for a significant amount of time. Our kind of de facto way of enforcing it has been saying it's there every once in a while, putting out some, some warnings and reminders of that and hoping for compliance. I just feel very strongly, if it's unenforceable, then we need to have it changed within our, within our, our ordinance. We shouldn't have a law on the books that's unenforceable and is not being enforced. So when we looked at this, we certainly looked to, to create good law. Came at it to the Bid Transportation Board with several options. One of them was smart parking meters, ALPER's license plate reader engaged parking meters that would be a very low staff resource time cost to the police department and be a revenue generator. Became pretty apparent very early on that that's not something the, the bid was interested in pursuing. We talked about time restrictions. That's very staff intensive, however, certainly something we would look at. However, lots of conversations about how that would limit customers in the downtown and maybe discourage customers coming. And so that basically left us with two options in my mind, and one would be a laissez-faire approach and not have any ordinance. And that's certainly something from a public safety standpoint, I was willing to entertain. We don't have a significant amount of crashes in the downtown because of parking. We don't have significant traffic flow issues because of parking. But that's strictly public safety. One of my commitments to the community is, three of them, excellence in policing, accountability, and finally responsiveness to the community. And it's that final piece, that responsiveness to the community that is engaged here. What does the community want? And there certainly is economic development drivers to having that ordinance that would look at turnover in the downtown and being able to provide public parking for customers. So with that, we brought this forward to the full bid. We did have some pretty engaging conversations with members of the public at that public meeting, and I'll be very honest with you, I walked out of that meeting very committed to this ordinance. We had nothing but positive comments, people saying, "Thank you, it's about time, we need this to, for our businesses." So really interested tonight if there are those comments or comments from the other wanting this to be something that is reflective and responsive of the community. Our goal is very much simplification of the ordinance. We're taking a monstrosity omnibus ordinance that's just overly complicated and no longer enforceable, all with great intentions when it was first written, just, I think, in today's society, not reasonable. One of the largest pieces for me that is concerning is it requires compliance in the fact of registering your vehicle from the very people who may be looking to not follow the ordinance. That's, that's bad law. So we're going to make it very simple and do a customer-only parking. That's very similar to posted restrictions that we see in private lots or customer-only or even rental properties that are for tenants only. It's certainly something that's established law. Just need to make sure that it's done correctly. So a clear ordinance that's known to the public. We've worked, Communications worked wonderfully to create some great-looking signs that will be posted in the downtown and make it very clear, no questions about it, because of course our goal is compliance. Our goal isn't citations or revenue or anything along those lines. Our goal is compliance. We're not looking to find the one-off violator, we're looking for the intentional violators. And we're very confident with a clear ordinance, with it clearly posted, with a clear, consistent enforcement philosophy, that we're going to change behaviors, and we're not going to have to rely on citations, we're going to rely on changing the ordinance and clear expectations. If the council approves the ordinance, we'll roll it out with a hard push towards education first. Again, Communications, we're working very hard to have an online presence, frequently asked page or some format of that. We'll start with warnings, again, to change behaviors, not looking to create a lot of citations, looking for people to comply. Timing is, I'll be honest, a force multiplier for us right now with the construction coming up. People are going to have to change their behavior, and this is a great way to utilize this ordinance and get it known so people can change their behaviors, and the construction project will actually help with that. So when we come back and ready for a revitalized downtown, open and friendly to our customers, behaviors will already have been changed. If passed, the, initially, it will be very much complaint-based. So the ordinance will be very clear, and we'll be looking for our community to be engaged in its enforcement. It's not unreasonable. This is clearly an ordinance that has been requested from the, I would, from our belief, from all of our public comments and our working with the bid board, which exists to represent, is something that's been requested by the majority of the employers down there. It's not unreasonable for us to be asking them to be engaged in its enforcement. That's what we ask of our community every day. See something, say something. We ask them, the police are the people, the people are the police. We ask them to be engaged. So initially, it would be complaint-based. It's not that hard for us as officers and community service officers to determine if you're a customer or an employee. And again, I want to stress, we're not looking for the employee who spends a half hour because they're, or 15 minutes because they're picking up their paycheck or paperwork. We're looking for the flagrant violators who just aren't willing to agree to follow our laws and social contract as far as this goes. So it'll be complaint-based. Eventually, we're looking at utilizing technology and license plate readers. Our new squad cameras have a license plate reader function in them. We're working with our vendor to see if we're going to add a squad camera into one of our CSO vehicles, and we're working with them to see if we can just through positioning have that function as a, as a license plate reader, so we don't have to have a standalone system. And that'll work simply by once we have known violators, we'll have, it's called a hot list. We'll have known violators into that database, and as the squad drives down the road, if one of those known violators is there, it's at least an indication that they need to stop and, and do some investigation to see if they're violating the ordinance. With that, because we know it's actually the human element that makes enforcement effective, we're looking at, we have, right now, we're authorized for eight part-time CSOs. We're going to combine two of those part-time positions and return to a full-time CSO platform, one employee, who will be focused on downtown, who will be focused on ensuring this ordinance is enforced. We've got some added benefits. We're going to also utilize them to be patrolling our school locations, the outside the schools, the parochial schools, the public schools, and we'll add that into our school safety program. But the main focus will be in that downtown to make sure, again, that the ordinance is complied with. I could probably go on and on, but maybe best would be if you have some questions for me.
Sounds good. Well, I'll take your advice first. If there's anybody from the audience who would like to ask any questions of the chief or any other comments, feel free to go ahead. Welcome, ma'am. If you don't mind saying your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Karen Betts, and I'm the owner of Clock In a Business Downtown at 215 North Main Street. So as the captain was mentioning, there was the bid board meeting. I was in attendance at that meeting, and I did speak about that as well, as well as many of the other owners, that we are in support of this new ordinance. As the owner myself, I agree. We are working so hard to add additional businesses, drive traffic down there, and it's very, very important that there's sufficient parking for the customers there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then I'll open up to the council if there's any questions.
Is there going to be a force of 8:00 to 11 o'clock?
Correct.
Do you find the parking issues changing all the way till about 9:00?
There'll be a 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
What about the evening hours? Have an employee that...
Do you want him to step up?
Yeah, do you mind stepping up to the mic, just so we have you on record? If you could introduce yourself too, please.
So my name is Todd Tennyson from Tennessee Hardware.
Thank you.
I don't see a parking problem downtown. If there is a parking problem, it's a good thing, because we have a vibrant downtown. I think we need to look at other solutions in terms of what we're trying to do. As I look at the map and I see that they're more or less telling everybody that they have to park on the west side of 7th Avenue, that means people are going to be parking up by Holy Angels School, Holy Angels Church, they're going to be parking in front of residences. And if I'm a resident of 8th Avenue or anywhere up there, and I work a factory job and I come home at 2:30 and I can't park in front of my house because all the employees are parking up that way, I'm going to be mad. I also look at this and I say to myself, the pressure that's put on downtown is also created by the apartments on the south side and on the north side of Main Street, and it's going to continue to get worse. I think the city needs to find viable options for downtown parking, perhaps double-decking parking lots on 5th Avenue or by the post office. As a business owner, we pay taxes, we pay a bid board district or bid board assessment, and we also pay for parking permits. That's like triple taxation. The parking problem is a good thing. We do have a vibrant downtown that brings a lot of people into our community from outside the community, be it from other cities. I think once we have the new construction project done, I think it's going to bring more people. But I also think that by pushing our employees up to 8th Avenue or beyond into some of the other parking lots, you have women, you have older people that have to walk that distance to get to their job. I have said it before, I've heard it mentioned by other businessmen, you know, you guys have a really nice parking lot next to your city hall here, very highly visible. Maybe we should sell it, sell that lot and take some of that money and invest it in a parking lot down by Decorous School. Will your employees work, walk to work? I don't think so. We are all violators. We all violate the rules downtown. My employees, the employees from other businesses downtown, we're all guilty. But I really truly believe that we need to look at other options before we initiate this ordinance. A parking problem is a good problem. For years, Chief Mueller would not enforce the rules. And I thank him for that because you don't know how many times I came up here and fought with police officers to say, hey, this isn't a right ticket. And we argued them all the time. I'm sure a lot of people did. I think you're asking for more problems with having people come up here and complain about parking tickets. We say it's not for revenue sources and things like that, but you know, once it becomes you're a violator, you're a violator, you're a violator, the tickets are coming. The tickets will be coming. And then it's a revenue source. To put another CSO officer on staff, we don't need that. We should be able to find a resolution and a resolution to the situation that we have. We don't need to add another full-time RSO officer to the tax rule or to the bid board payments. I believe what we have is a very, very good problem downtown. We need to come up with solutions that are better than trying to force everybody out of downtown, especially the employees. Employees are hard to find. I don't believe most employees will want to walk that distance to get to their job. We need to look at other solutions. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Now I'll open up to the council if anybody has any questions. I'll start with Alderman Donak here.
First to clarify something, chief, you're not adding a CSO because of this, are you?
We're going to regain our full-time CSO position that we got rid of for multiple reasons, we see. And one of them is school safety, but the priority would be to be patrolling in the downtown parking like they used to do. We had two very committed full-time CSOs in Lonnie Weber and Jim Quoddy. And they, that human element is what allowed them to identify who were the people downtown that were violating the current ordinance. I appreciate Mr. Tenny's comments. I don't necessarily agree that we shouldn't enforce a law that's on the books. I don't agree with that at all. It goes against everything I believe in and what I swore to do when I took this job 28 years ago. So I don't agree with that. And if people are getting tickets being issued in here, I ask you to come down and we'll clarify them. I don't think that's something that is a standard practice at our department.
I had a question of more of a procedural thing. If you, if an officer, whether visually or using the plate identifier or whatever, plate comes back or they recognize that it's Todd Tennyson's car and it's parked in front of his store, Todd's going to get a ticket. But they're not going to know that it's an employee. I mean, I don't believe that most of the officers or CSO know who's all working in all of those businesses. So it seems to me that the enforcement would be hodgepodge, inequitable?
Well, I would disagree with that respectfully. I think right now, under the current ordinance, it certainly is unenforceable. I think like most things that come in front of the police department for enforcement, it's going to require basic investigation. And so if we were just going to stick a ticket on the window, I might agree with you, but that's not the case. We're going to do a basic investigation. And again, we're not looking for, I refute that we're looking at this to generate revenue. All we need to do is look at the budgets for the last decade and we can tell that that is not certainly our goals, mission or anything like that. We're not looking to issue tickets. We're looking for compliance. We're looking to change behaviors. So initially it's going to be, and that's one of the reasons why I feel a part-time CSO that works once, twice a week will not be able to enforce this. It's going to need to be someone who's down there consistently that's going to know. And again, not looking for the person that maybe made a mistake and wasn't aware of the ordinance yet and their employer isn't enforcing it, which is one of the main issues. Appreciate the admission tonight, right? It's one of the main issues that are, the employer themselves aren't asking their employees. We have some that are very passionate about making sure their employees don't park in the area so their businesses stay viable. And I think this ordinance is trying to get to a reasonable balance between the goal and enforcement. So I think a full-time CSO would be there to conduct those investigations. And initially, I expect we're going to spend a tremendous amount of time on doing that to make sure it is fair and equitable. And I'll say again, it won't succeed without engagement of the community, without the community being engaged in its enforcement. We had a firm commitment from the group that was here on November 15th. Again, I encourage you to watch that meeting that, boy, without doubt, they were going to be, they had a list already for us as soon as this goes through.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Alderman.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, chief. And by the way, I did, I did watch that, that thing you told me to watch. It was, it did seem like people in general were for this. I have heard a couple of concerns though. Is there precedence for doing a blanket downtown customer-only parking?
Posted restrictions are well-accepted in enforceable parking ordinances. I think of, any of us think of any of the major cities that we go to or visit or cities our size, you see some type of restriction in almost every downtown business setting, be it two-hour parking or parking meters or posted restrictions. So we're certainly not Daniel Boone in this area.
Okay, okay. And I don't have a business downtown, full disclosure. I'm up in Barton. We don't have that problem, by the way. How much, because I'm not downtown, I don't know how much. I've been, I've been on the bid board transportation committee before. I've been kind of involved in this issue for a long time, but I haven't felt it. Do you have a sense or do you have any data that supports how much of a problem this really is?
We have the, go ahead.
Our, our office is downtown in the Centrum Building and it is a significant issue. I mean, there's regularly times when you come in midday, 2 o'clock, and there isn't a spot on either 6th or on Main Street for a client to park anywhere near the Centrum Building. It's either down at the ends of the block, the block down between, or closer to Walnut Street. It's, it is a significant problem in those middle of the downtown several blocks. And, and you can see the problem when it's, you know, you can see how drastic it is when you have bank holidays and postal holidays, how suddenly empty the downtown is. And how much parking is suddenly available.
Okay, okay.
I'll say in addition to that anecdotal evidence, generally when we're looking to see if there's data, it's because there's a public safety concern, crashes, traffic for obstruction. Clearly that's, I hesitate to say it because it'll, could be misconstrued that it means we don't have an interest down there. But there is no public safety interest. It's an, it's a community responsive interest. I'll direct you to the packet and the letter from the bid board, which is the organization designed to represent the interest of our businesses downtown, asking you unanimously to support the ordinance. So I think from a responsiveness standpoint, and it's one of the reasons we're having the public comment. I wish there were more people. I encourage if others have comments to come up. Because we're looking for those same solutions, right? In that meeting, we mentioned, we hope that eventually there are addition, there absolutely should, needs to be additional parking opportunities down there. The fact of the matter is there, there aren't right now, with the exception of 250 spaces in our public lots that are identified on the map. I get it, they're, they're maybe a block or two longer than we'd want to walk. Well, maybe much further if we want to park in front of our business, but there's 250 spots. The reconstruction, I think, is adding 34, 35 additional parking spots that we want reserved for those customers to put. And I agree. And we've said this, the fact that we're even having this conversation is awesome. There's some economic excitement going on in our, in our downtown, in our community. The fact that we're clamoring for more spots to have for our customers to support a vibrant downtown is a, that's, that is a wonderful problem to have. I agree 100%. And I, I think we're open to what other options are. This tries to find that reasonable balance. The timeframe, nine to five is reasonable balance. Most of the employees that are working in a normal business hour have vacated the downtown, you know, just kind of common sense wise, nine to five job, which then means we don't need to be as restrictive. And I think that's one of the reasons we trying to find that reasonable balance.
Sure.
And being responsive to the community.
Yeah, yeah. And I did, I did ask you Jay earlier about data and how many employees we thought there were downtown and the amount of spaces that we had kind of segmented off for them. And I guess you did answer that question with the 250 number and generally feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, absolutely. If you, the 250 spaces that chief is talking about reflect the commonly referred to as the MOA lot, the horseshoe lot and the Westman Medical Lot, all three publicly owned lots, public, public parking lots at this time, not, not publicly owned, but public parking lot. We have monster P's that point people to those directional arrows to those lots. And you can drive through, there's been a little bit of an uptick in the last few days as this ordinance has been discussed and business owners are starting to be more responsive. But by and large, those lots are wide open and available. So that's the 250 spaces that chief is referring to. And business can park there for free from 8:00 to 5:00. They can stay there overnight. They just have to, the only rule is that they have to move their vehicle within a 24-hour period of time. Lots of opportunity.
Yeah, just one last, one last comment. I, you know, I've got a business up in Barton and like I said, we don't really have the same exact kind of issues, but there is no way I would ever park in a spot that I knew my customers wanted to park in. There is no way I would do that. So there is a large, I'd have concerns, but there's a large part of me that supports this.
And it comes to my right. Alderman Kayler.
A couple of things. Again, it's a great problem to have. I guess more than anything I was taken aback, this kind of, obviously you guys have been talking about it for a year, but this kind of popped on our plates on Friday. We have until Monday. I'd like a little more time to do some more research, look at some other options. The only calls I received on it were against it. I had zero calls in support of it. So given the short timeframe, I would ask that we postpone this two weeks and give us a little time to look at this and get a little more input. And if it truly is what they want, then I don't have a problem with it. But at this point, I really don't have a feel other than what took place at the bid meeting, which I've not had a chance to watch yet. So that'd be my thoughts. And one other thing, what if we have a disabled or handicapped employers there? Some sort of provision for them to be able to park near the business rather than having to walk the two or three blocks?
So there are disabled spaces. We are discussing the likelihood of adding additional disabled spaces. I don't think that's necessarily going to be next year, given the construction downtown. But it is certainly something we have discussed as far as adding additional disabled spaces as they're, as they're there. There's also provisions specifically in the state statutes that apply to enforcement of disabled spaces. And there's also, I mean, discretion on behalf of the police department that, you know, again, this is not, this is intended to get compliance on the, the problem of, you know, employees blocking off customer spaces. This is not intended to punish somebody who has a, you know, broken leg and can't walk the extra block. So that's, that solidly is going to fall into police, you know, working with the police as well.
And I agree with justice. I mean, if you're a downtown business owner and you're truly concerned about parking, it should be up to you to make sure your employees and you are not parking in customer parking. I mean, to me, this is a self-policing issue. It's just, but I would like more time to look at this.
Thank you. Alderman.
I'd like to echo Alderman Kayler's suggestion that we postpone taking action on this until our next meeting in two weeks and ask if there's any public comment that people couldn't get to us in this forum, that they would be able to contact their alderman or contact the city and make those concerns known.
Yeah, I'd love to have 100 phone calls on an issue once. I mean, bring it on. If there's something you're truly passionate about, let us know.
Alderman Buzek, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have one question, chief. On your map here, I notice Veterans Avenue is marked as a customer parking only. Being no businesses in that area, is there any possibility of making that, eliminate that from customer parking? Or who can answer that?
Well, you addressed it to chief, but I'll jump in if that's okay and he can follow up. The, the main reason, MOA, the Museum of Wisconsin Art is located there. So that was the main reason that staff is recommending veterans be changed from open parking to customer-only parking as, as businesses might desire to move into the MOA lot, the public parking lot, that lot could get filled up for them. And their, their visitors and their customers that go to MOA would likely look to veterans as an alternative.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoken yet? You want to, good? All right, back to Randy, go ahead.
I just want to, on that point, then why won't we make the MOA lot, which is adjacent to their building, MOA Parking, and Open Veterans, which is closer to downtown for employee parking? I mean, there, there's some of the things that I think need to be discussed before we, we bone on this.
The, the other thing I, I mean, regarding that issue, I think that everybody involved in this acknowledges that there's going to be further discussion on what this looks like several years from now. There's kind of two issues in play here. One is what is this going to look like next year? And we need something that's enforceable for next year because the parking that is a problem now is going to be a really bad problem next year because all of Main Street is going to potentially be out for the entire year. We don't know how the, you know, it's basically going to be turned over for construction to the, the company doing the construction. Whether they keep a portion of it open or not during any part of the construction is in their discretion based on their construction schedule. So we have to plan for Main Street being out of commission for the whole year during the construction portion. So we need to address the parking problem that's already bad with Main Street for what happens next year. And I think that's a big portion of why veterans is included at this point for sure because there's going to be a lot of people walking across the bridge to access those businesses during the downtown construction. So I think that has to maintain, that has to stay there at least for now. It's very easy to modify the zone as we see how parking progresses. If we realize that this is a better situation than we thought, we can modify it accordingly. Once downtown is done, we, and we, we get a better sense for what does it look like now that it's customers only? And what are the needs allowed? The problem is, we don't have that data point right now because downtown is so flooded with employee parking, it's hard to get a, it's hard to get a, you know, specific figure for what that looks like. Because it's, it's just not feasible to get a traffic count for separating employees and, and customers. It's just too difficult to do that. So I, I think yes, this may get revisited, the map itself may get revisited, but this is a framework that works. And that's a very easy change to the customer parking zone portion, portion of the ordinance as we move forward.
I'll say Alderman Kayler, your experience as an Alderman shows, obviously you went through this, but just something to kind of chew on is Veterans Avenue itself is maybe 30 spots. The MOA is 73 spots. So doing that flip-flop, we'd kind of lose 43 spots. But you're asking the same questions that our group definitely discussed and, and worked through. So thanks for that opportunity to point out. I mean, we've certainly worked, are looking at every reasonable option. We'll certainly look forward to hearing if there's other reasonable options. I think we'd all love a parking structure or additional parking spots down there. We just, the matter is, we don't have one. We're trying to find the balance, be responsive to the community's needs.
Well, I'll let Brett go because we haven't heard from him tonight.
As someone who has been intimately familiar with parking downtown in my former profession and the fact that now that I represent people, our community, that chief deering is so eloquently called them, okay, reflective of the community, the fact that the ordinance is written that clearly eliminates a portion of that community by not addressing some of the needs of the employees and residents that live in this district, okay? There is no mention of, other than exceptions to the definition of customer. There is no, no reference to where or what, other than three parking lots that residents or other employees. In this day and age where we're having a very hard time finding employees to work, period, the fact that they've been excluded from any kind of consideration. And I know business owners should have a feel for their employees. for their employees. I mean, look, I've heard some business owners already going, rushing out and buying permits that have, that has inundated the, the whole process as far as being able to gather up these permits so that they can take care of their people. But what about everybody else? And the fact that each and every one of the buildings downtown, I believe, have residences above them or associated with them that are also going to be impacted with not only this ordinance, but now the construction next year. And there's no reference to any kind of communication with them or any kind of direction to them. If that be the case, I'd like to know that, which then echoes Randy's comments about maybe needing a little more time before we take action on this. I agree with you. Okay? Parking has been a problem in downtown West Bend forever. Okay? I'll put it that way, forever. Because we've, I've lived here when there was parking meters downtown. Okay? There were parking meters downtown. There were parking areas all over the place where people could park. It's been an issue. It's been addressed several different ways. Each, each new administration, each new downtown organization has tried and tried and tried. I believe this is just another one of those try, another one of those examples of trying to come to a solution that helps everybody. But again, I just, I look at the ordinance and I, I see a group of people that have been excluded. And I would just like to reach out to them and see what their side of the story is. Thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Dolik, did you have a comment?
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're right, Alderman Burklist. You are intimately familiar with the ordinance and the ordinance that's been on the books for the last 20 years that excluded residents and employees from parking down there. Nothing's changing in the addition to this. In fact, it's simplifying and making sure they're aware of what their responsibility is. Every landlord down there knows the expectations and residents aren't an issue. And they can park downtown. They're also excluded from parking downtown from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM and always have been so we can maintain our streets and plow the snow. So I understand what you're saying, but nothing in this recommendation is changing any of that. I also, at the risk of overstepping my bounds of being a police chief, will say that if you're hearing negative feedback on it now, great. That's what we want. We want to hear that so we're responsive. But you also, the calls that you're not getting are because we've had public meetings. We've had, you have a letter saying that the bid board that exists to represent the employees supports this because they've identified it for a prob, as a problem. And in order to keep their employees, they need to stay open. And some of them have identified this as affecting their business to the level that they're worried that will affect their business to stay in the downtown. So this is addressing that responsiveness. That maybe oversteps my bounds as a police officer, but it doesn't overstep my bounds as a citizen of this city. So I hear what you're saying and I appreciate that you're looking out for the people, but nothing in this ordinance is changing that.
Thank you. Was there another comment over here?
Just a question. Does the chief or anyone else know what they do in Cedarburg? Because I'm thinking Cedarburg must have this same type of issue, the way they're organized up and down that one Main Street of theirs. Do you have an idea, Chief?
I do. I'm sorry. Give me two seconds and I probably left it on my desk.
Okay.
Because I did a survey and we also looked at, maybe you don't, much of it is two-hour parking and time restrictions and pushing. And it's a, I think there might be, I'm going to over, because we looked at similar jurisdictions. I'd certainly get that answer for you, but they have regulations in place. And most of it is, again, like two-hour parking or turnover. And the thought on, and that was certainly a discussion with bid as we presented it to them, and some very passionate speeches about not putting the nexus on the customer. Not putting the onus, I should say, on the, on the customer and not making, so we talked about two hours. We heard from very impassioned, hairstylist, is that the right term? Who's their services take more than two hours. Okay, four hours sometimes. It's more than four. And some very impassioned speeches from the bid about not wanting those time restrictions because it's actually going to be, and not wanting the, the meters for the same reason, is that would be a negative for customers coming down. We don't want that. We want the customers coming down. So I can get you the specifics, but I know it's very firmly on two-hour and I believe metered, but I've got that on my desk. I'm sorry. I should have brought that tonight.
Drafting this the way it was, was aimed at responsiveness to the business owners. It would have been far simpler to draft an ordinance that says two-hour parking, that says metered parking. That would have made my life a whole lot easier. But there was an attempt to try to make this the best for all the interested parties, that it was focused on this customer, the customer definition, how we define that, who qualifies. We had extensive discussions about how that looks to make sure that this is crafted in the best way possible to support the downtown.
I respect what, certainly I respect the opinions of the bid people because it's their businesses. As a customer, when I go to a, a place, a city, and I see it's two-hour parking, I don't take it personally or offensively. Or, and I don't say, I'm not coming back here. It's just a matter of fact thing. Science says two hours. So I guess, I have to admit, I don't understand that philosophy.
Yes, sir.
This is actually a question for Administrator Chambo. Did we not have the ability to double the number of stalls in the auxiliary court? It seems when we were doing the Trails End development, that was actually looked at at that time. We could actually double that, correct?
That is correct. The horseshoe ladder, the Trails Edge, or the hub, or the auxiliary court, whatever you want to call that, public lot that the city owns, is already prepped. The, the grading work is in place for the doubling of that. The horseshoe can just be extended out further and add approximately 50 spots. Currently, there are two to three cars in there on a consistent basis during the day. So there's been no need for the city to pursue that doubling at this time. But should this ordinance be effective, like we're convinced it will be, that's something that the city can look to for the future.
And kind of along those same lines we discussed a little bit earlier, another parking lot that's adjacent to the, to the tennis lot that could potentially be available. I mean, that's a huge parking lot, right?
I think Alderman Model's referring to the church lot.
The church lot, correct.
UCC Emanuel Lot, that is a private lot. So it would be between any potential business owner and that private entity as far as a parking arrangement is concerned. But there are over 80 parking spaces in that lot alone.
Huge spot, yeah.
There's other private lots throughout the city as well.
Sure, 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 sure.
Any other comments otherwise? Maybe we can look for a motion and get the ball rolling here.
Is there, I'm sorry, I meant to, I meant to ask that question too. Is there, is there a sense of urgency with this? Is there a reason why it couldn't go to the next meeting?
The, why it couldn't go to the next meeting, if that's what this body chooses to do, I don't think that's a deal breaker. What we're looking at is trying to have it in place prior to shutting down Main Street so we can start our education process. So when the construction starts, it becomes a force multiplier to just change those habits by a very nature. So if that's what the body wants. I'll say this, I am all for us being as responsive as we can and gathering as much information as we can. I would strongly encourage the public that's listening and that apparently is calling all of you to call you and voice their concerns and offer those other solutions that if they're out there, boy, we sure take a look, right? But then on the second side, I'd encourage the people who believe their voice has already been heard.
Sure, sure, sure.
And you have that through public meetings.
We've been discussing this forever, yeah.
And the bid, right?
Yeah.
Because there was an opportunity for those comments to be heard, and that was definitely broadcast, I know, both by the bid and by the Downtown Association. So I just ask that we keep that in mind, that there's a whole section that you may not hear from because they believe their voice has already been heard.
Sure.
And Chief, I wanted to reiterate, reiterate something you said, which is, we need to address this one way or the other. So if the, the will of the council is not to do this, we need to do something, even if that's to wipe everything off the books and have nothing. Because what's, there right now is not enforceable, especially not as practice has happened. And we should not have ordinances on the book that are, or on the books that are not enforceable. So we need to do something, whether it's this, whether it's a slightly modified version of this, or whether it's to remove the existing parking ordinances. You know, we need to do something.
I'd like to make a motion.
Remove the existing ordinance as it sits, because that is, like Chief said, it's unenforceable.
My thing's not on, sorry. And maybe this will get shut down, but I'm just going to make, make a motion to, to approve as it sits. To approve this, approve the new ordinance.
This would remove the old ordinance.
Okay, fine.
So you're accepting everything as?
Sure, sure. Yeah, it's okay if people don't agree, but.
I thought you were just wiping ordinance books out in one motion.
I'll go the other direction too and wait another couple of weeks. That's why I know.
Got it. Is there a second to that effect? I guess that motion dies for lack of a second. So to open up for any other?
To postpone for two weeks to be reheard at the common council on the 19th of December.
Thank you, Dolik. And I think I heard Kaler before. Any comments on that?
Hearing none?
If it's my place to comment, I would ask them that you reach out to your constituents.
Yeah, for sure.
If we're delaying, that it be for a worthwhile reason, then you seek those comments.
And I can add that we have a mechanism, Jed just serves as the executive director for the, for the bid. We can certainly put out a notice to all the business owners that, as Chief mentioned, felt like their voices were heard and that they're crazy in favor of this ordinance that, Alderman Kaler, I don't know if they'll hit 100, but if they can try, that this might be the new, the new record for you.
It would be great to see somebody actually speak.
Yeah, I agree.
About an issue one way or the other.
Two weeks isn't going to be, be a big issue on this topic, but postponing it long-term, going into the construction season is what this, this new ordinance is attempting to control behavior for.
Just, and before we vote, can we, can we vote to remove the current ordinance and delay? Or do we have to?
I would just wait. I would wait to act in some, some way.
Correct. We've waited 20 years, two weeks.
It'd be like the Wild West in downtown if we just blow everything up, so.
Just for my information, there is a bid board meeting tomorrow morning, is there not?
All right. We have a motion second to table to our next meeting. If there's no further discussion, then all's in favor, so I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. We'll see you soon. All right. And we're on to number 17, approval of relocating the farmer's market organized by the Downtown West Bend Association Saturdays, May 20th, 2023 to October 21st, 2023. I don't think we have a presentation for this. We all know that they need to be moved in order to facilitate downtown reconstruction. So if we could have a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, and Alan, any questions on this?
Just a question on who came up with the proposal as to where it got relocated to or what, how did this come about?
I would say Gina approached us from the Downtown Association. There's been lots of conversation between the city staff and, and the Downtown Association regarding this location.
I just thought, I'm gonna go back to Veterans Avenue, but I thought that would have been a great spot for it.
That was certainly discussed.
And as long as we're talking about parking, has there been considerations for parking for that event in that area? I know they want to keep it in the area of downtown, correct? Rather than, say, some alternative site like Regner Park or someplace. So I was just curious if that has been considered as far as parking problems during the summer next year while it's relocated.
Mayor, can we have Gina come up and discuss this a little bit?
I know she loves speaking in front of people.
Do you mind?
Yep. And we know who you are, but if you don't mind stating your name and what organization you're with?
I am Gina Beards, or the Executive Director for Downtown Association.
All right, what was the question?
Question was about parking.
Correct.
Is that correct? So we have the church parking lot right behind us, which on the opposite side of
The Oracle.
St. Emanuel parking lot. So they have said that we're going to be able to use their parking lot for some of that because we are also renting their parking lot for music on Main. So we want, they will be kind enough to allow us to have that parking lot on Saturday mornings for the farmer's market. So that'd be a lot of space. We're also not closing down Chestnut, which will give us the space there. And not to mention, we're talking about seven o'clock in the morning to 11:00. So it's not a high-traffic time on a Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Fifth Avenue Methodist Parking Lot is across street also there. Is that parking lot going to be available as well?
That parking lot has not been approved by the church yet, but I am going to be sitting down with them. So hopefully we can work that out. I did not want to approach too many people in case there was a conflict with this with you all. So I, some people are aware that this is an opportunity and going to happen. And if we make this happen, then we'll sit down and have longer conversations.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that the parking access to the Historical Society Building, it's a one-way in, one-way out?
It surrounds the building completely, and the Historical Society will be utilizing it for their own use on that day. They want to have their own vendors out there and do their own thing. So it's going to be an opportunity for them as well.
Okay, so they've, they know that one of their ramps is not accessible.
We, we're not going to be on their property per se, so that won't be anything that we will be doing or worrying about, I should say. As far as ADA is your question.
But they can't go out on Poplar.
Go back on the same way.
Okay.
Do you mean ADA accessibility? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, I mean, there's, there's a enter only on Chestnut, and there's an exit only on Poplar. Whereas you go in and out, in a line.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
And so you're taking all Poplar?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's their exit from their parking lot.
Yeah. Okay. And I apologize, I did not know that. But they are fully aware, and I've talked with their board, and the majority of them are very, very excited.
Okay.
They'll just be stuck.
It'll just be like, it was the Animal House, it'll be the marching band going down the alley.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, well.
And we're going back to Main Street in 2024, I hope, so.
What's been the comments from the residents? We're affecting?
We're affecting one resident right now, and they haven't answered their door.
Okay, I see. There's three on, two on Poplar, right?
I have one on Poplar.
I'll tell if it's a wholesale business, and I don't recall what everything is there.
There's the one on the corner, 530, 580, 518.
All right.
Any other comments? All right. Well, we do have a motion second. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
All those in favor of that relocation, so I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. That passes. Number 18, ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend, Wisconsin for a change in the recommended land use for approximately 20 acres of land located on the east and west sides of Sand Drive, south of East Decor Road and north of Western Avenue. And we'll have a brief presentation summary by Jim Renke. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. Today I'm asking council to consider a land use change, pass the ordinance for this. So it's for 20 acres of land just south of Decor Road on the east and west sides of Sand Drive. This is to help facilitate the redevelopment of the area. So we're asking the change from the institutional and government and institutional use and industrial uses to a mixed use to help facilitate the redevelopment of the area. After consideration for this, we have the other agenda item, which is the actual zoning, which would change the zoning from the industrial uses and institutional public service uses and the commercial use over to the MXD zoning.
Great. Thanks so much.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Muddle and Kaler. Any questions for Jim on this first item? If not, all's in favor, so I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And number 19, as Jim alluded to, is an ordinance to rezone approximately 23.8 acres of land located on the east and west sides of Sand Drive, south of East Decor Road and north of Eastern Avenue.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Kaler and Singseim. And discussion on this? Hearing none, all's in favor, so I'm gonna say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, so let me say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. And then number 20 is a resolution creating tax incremental District Number 16, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries in the city of West Bend, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Alan, maybe you don't even need to say anything. All right, I'll open up if there's any questions from the council. Apparently there's not. Then all those in favor, so let me say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for coming all this way, right? Just for that? And we're going to go into our closed session. Entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, Para 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session in this forward developer's agreement. Negative motion.
Move to move into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayler and Alan. And we can please have a roll call vote. Ms. Elizabeth?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Burkest.
Aye.
Alderman Kayler.
Aye.
Alderman Doldek.
Aye.
Alderman Aaron, excused. Alderman Model.
Aye.
And Alderman Zingheim.
Aye. Thank you. And we'll be resuming open session shortly. All right, we're going to reconvene here into open session, and we'll start off with a quick comment from our attorney.
So just want to note for any motion for approval that it's going to be contingent upon final approval of the TID. And then the caveat that the actual name of the entity may change from West Bend Senior Partners as details finalize amongst the developer. So just look for incorporation of those two items into any motion.
Motion to approve, as stated.
Second.
Thank you, Kayler and Model. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, so let me say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you, guys. Thank you for being here. And we'll move on to reports. Number two, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting held on November 15.
Here we we actually got a pretty good instant replay of the meeting. Many, many of the same people talked, but it was the bid was very, very much in favor of it with some minor concerns. And so I'm looking forward to any comment from anybody that's willing to weigh in on it before next council meeting.
Sounds good. Any questions for Alderman Allen?
Very much verbatim, though.
And then last but not least, a report by Alderman Burkest regarding the library board meeting.
It's a good thing I was the last. Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was called to order on November 15, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. The consent agenda containing the minutes of the last meeting and monthly expenditures was approved without any revisions. The financial report and fund balance updates were given, noting a donation to the Connie Smith Memorial, plus donations from the Optimist Club for the 2022 Summer Reading Program, and the Early Riser Kiwanis for general library programming. Thank you very much. The library director spoke of the possibility of matching donations to the Friends of the Library Foundation using some restricted funds. Stay tuned for more information on this and more information on the foundation. The library director's report started with good news of the city budget passing. That was good news. He also provided information to the board concerning two incidents that occurred at the library on Election Day. The first involving an armed individual demanding that staff stop the voting, and another involving an individual claiming to be a reporter wanting to video the voting. The library is a polling place, and these incidents bring to the bring up the need for staff to receive training in dealing with these kind of incidents. Okay, excuse me. The library, okay, moving on. Yeah. The library is planning on tagging the collection with RFID tags. These are the sensor tags that allow tracking and security of library items. It's estimated at needing over 1,200 hours of volunteer time to put these tags on the collection. So that we're going to be reaching out to volunteers and service organizations to help out with that project. City departments are invited to join Coffee Fridays as a way of sharing their information with the community. The library is losing its notary republic to retirement and is looking at shifting some of this service to the clerk's office, sorry, where all the staff is certified until we can come up with someone who's either hired for that purpose or trained. Staff attended the Wisconsin Library Association Conference where the theme was Rising to the Challenge. Steve reported that there is an organized movement to ban certain materials in libraries across the state. So we are going to take a look at our challenge policy. That's right, we have a policy covering that, and other policies that we have. We actually addressed some of those later in the meeting. Steve also brought back the for consideration a future 10 to 20 year plan for building needs, keeping in mind current capital budget considerations. The board president had nothing to add, or we would be here longer. But she and Steve did cancel the December board meeting because it fell during the week of Christmas. Thank you, Deb. Agenda items for consideration included revisions to the bulletin board policy, the meeting room policy, and the acceptable use policy, all of which were approved. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for the 17th of January 2023. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you all. My breakfast. Any questions for him? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Questions?
Do that. I'm sure I misunderstood this.
This RDQ thing, are we putting?
RFID.
RFID?
Yep.
We're putting tracking chips in books?
Yeah.
Just Alderman.
No. And it's just the tracking tags like you see in and loss prevention kind of things. Yeah.
Okay, it's not a.
No, we have.
Tracking device.
Yeah, not for the people, okay, for the items.
Yeah, okay.
So you know, when you walk out the door someplace and the buzzer goes off, letting you know that, you know, the staff know that you have something you shouldn't have. So that's what those are for.
It's not GPS, yeah.
Yeah. So.
This is not directly a question. My wife's a member of the Friends of the Library and does the Coffee Fridays thing. She has asked that I approach the council and see if the council member or councilman would be interested in each one taking a week sometime during the year. And you buy the snacks or whatever for the for the day, and you could come and you could talk about a project, or you could come and just meet with constituents, or you could just send cookies. So just.
Okay, that's a little more than what I heard. I what I heard was just having one of us there as a representative during some of those times. But hey, bring cookies or something along. That would be that would work. But yeah, it just as a means of connecting us with them. So.
And us is not just the Aldermen, it's, you know, the police or.
Yeah, because the city departments are being asked to participate too, and that's what brought this. And then one of us, she mentioned, she mentioned my name in particular because I'm on the board. So it's like.
I think any I think any week that one of the rest of us doesn't volunteer, you need to show up.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Back to you, sir.
All right. How about any other comments for the good of the order? All right. Well, I got one. Just give me a little bit of time. When when I was 18, I was bet by my best friend to run for mayor of West Bend. And while thankfully I lost that experience of going door to door and getting to feel like I could make a difference in my community stuck with me, I became hooked to public service. I had started by attending different local party events, met with community leaders, and began my career right away. I started by becoming president of my local student government association at UWWC. I participated in one of Mayor Stadlenkov's task forces. I joined our library board and became president shortly after. I was elected to the city council, beating out an incumbent, sorry, Randy, and stepped on the county board to learn about our impact at a county level. And then after all that, I came full circle to run for mayor once again, knowing that the timing was right in my life, that I could give this role the time and dedication it deserves. And while I definitely still have the desire to serve, my life has changed a bit since I was 18. I now have five children who've never lived a day their lives, or their daddy wasn't serving in some appointed or elected role. And I've had meetings and phone calls and different errands to attend to. I learned that the community service that I was doing on a part time basis was my true passion. And I changed my day jobs to become a municipal administrator and take the steps to complete my MPA. And over time, I've learned that to be able to serve a community as an impartial administrator and give my career full time and effort, that I could not also serve my time and full attention to the city of West Bend as it deserves. Serving as your mayor has truly been the most humbling honor of my life, a goal that was over a decade in the making, the one that I knew that I cannot do forever, and decision that I wrestled with for many, many months. So on that note, this will serve as an official notice to the community that I'll not be running for reelection next spring. And I filed my declaration of non candidacy with the clerk's office. I want to thank the countless businesses, nonprofits, residents who've supported me over the years. And I encourage you that if you have a desire to serve in our community, please run for local office. It is extremely rewarding to represent the city love and the people that we connect with on a day to day basis. Keep in mind, I'm not going quite yet. I have one more state of the city address to deliver, and we have big projects coming. We have a new TID, Continued Fire Department Discussions, Downtown Main Street Reconstruction, and Regner Swim Sees It Upon Us. And then, after all these preparations, I'll look forward to mentoring and being available to our next mayor, and continue the pattern that my predecessors have done for me. I'll continue to live here, be an active member of our community in other ways, as West Bend remains the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much for your time. And I guess I'll open it up if anybody has any other comments or questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just to reiterate your comments, I thank you for your service and not to piggyback, but I also have filed for my papers for non candidacy for District Four. And I would encourage anybody to get involved in any of the open positions.
Absolutely.
Whether they're contested or not, competition is a good thing. I encourage you, get involved in your city. We need multiple candidates for every position. And thanks again for your time, Chris.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank both of you for your service.
Thank you. Any else? John?
I as well. I would like to thank you very much. I learned an awful lot from you being president. I definitely want to thank you very much for all your help and assistance. Good luck in your endeavor as a new city administrator or village administrator, and wish you all the luck.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Chris, thank you for your service. I want to also wish you well with your dual town and village administrator in Fredonia. I'm sure we'll still see you at the the municipal association, Midbury Municipal Association. And I look forward to being your Alderman. Oh, wait, I already am.
Well, now I can really call you with complaints. It'd be nice.
Be careful what you wish for.
Every week.
Every week.
I just want to know, am I still going to get the emails that say, I just need you to do me a favor?
Of course you will.
Go to the Apple Store.
Gift cards, all gift cards, please.
Anything else? All right. Well, I'm not leaving you just yet. Got a few more months here. Let's make a lot of big things happen. And with that, I'll adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a good night.